Recording in progress.
Good evening. The August 5th School or to Volvo School Board meeting will come board. Would you please stand and read the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? And you have the roll call, Tiffany?
Yes, I do.
So the resolve Board of Education, approve the agenda for the August 5th, 2024 regular Board of Education meeting.
Sam?
Tom. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And our first order of business is vote of office for our new student representative. I think our clerk will carry that on.
Can I put what else? Oh, this, yes, yes. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Volvo School Central School District, Board of Education's freedom of honor for the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome. So if anybody's unfamiliar, I saw an interesting stat. We've had student representatives since, I think, 2010 or 2011. And that has become a topic of conversation in the state recently. And believe it or not, only a third of the New York State School Boards have a student representative. In our case, they are welcome to current applications. This process is done by the high school principal and assistant principals, I assume?
Yes, go ahead.
But welcome. Good to have you here. Next on the agenda is the Board Activities Committee reports. And going back, I know that we talked about, probably I've talked at meetings since you attended a leadership conference with New York State School Boards, right?
Yes, so I did attend this event. It felt like they had less breakout sessions this year than they did last year. But it was still really interesting. A lot of information that was shared. I shared the link to the PowerPoint presentations with the rest of the board. They focused a lot on declining enrollment in AI, which I haven't been to any of the topics on AI or any of the sessions on AI. So that was really interesting to see how it can affect in a positive. And then, of course, like with everything, there's always a negative. But it was really interesting to see that information as well. They had a really good presenter with the guy information. Those were the two that jumped out at me. But yeah, overall, these are always, always very informative and it was good to, you know, talk with other people on the board. So it was nice.
Great, great. Thank you. And then on August 1st, last Thursday, we had the law conference. I attended with Joe and Tiffany and Renee and Carrie. There was a number of highlights, kind of surprisingly busy, I thought, but anything that stands out that you think ought to?
I think just Title IX, certainly there's changes. I just see a couple of federal court cases that are outstanding. So we're anticipating further guidance and the policy committee will likely have to do some changes at some point during the 2425 school year. But definitely positive experience. I always want to do it a lot, even though I feel like we, you know, we're in constant communication with the attorneys on a regular basis with questions as they come up. But it's great to have it all in one place. And we do get physical copy of the changes, but we can check with prior, see if we get an electronic version of what they set and we can share it with the rest of the board. I also think the law conference, too, not to forget, the municipal one, I think Sam attended.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Sam?
I sent you the link of the video, or the link of the video recording and two of the topics, school board digging process, new laws and regulations, probably, and court cases, some of them that we didn't try and solve.
Okay, great. And then early in the evening, we had a very informative facilities meeting, which the entire board will be hearing a lot more about. But who will give you an executive overview?
Nick Magter, we had a good conversation from architects and financial advisors about our funding improvements and building the future. We've been talking about that over the last year and really started to get the momentum to move forward. So a lot of discussion on the reconfiguration of this as a whole, how it may look, what needs to be done as far as renovation and works. And as well as the package on how we can accomplish this over the next 10 years. Big dollar amount project, but over the course of 10 years, it's really nothing more than happens here over here. But it allows us as a district and as a community to not only plan, but expand the district for the future growth that we haven't even seen yet. So it's quite comprehensive. This has been a discussion, well, for most of us who are here even 10 years ago. And same theme, same push, same design, but it's definitely time to act. And we should have a whole board discussion and really dive into this at the next workshop in a couple of weeks. But really positive information from the professionals and experts when it comes to this. And this was definitely very thoroughly looked at. And there's a lot of numbers, plans, et cetera, that we'll go over more in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. And certainly you can see on here upcoming events. I don't know if anybody else has got anything or any comments on upcoming? Joe?
Just a reminder, we have new teacher orientation, staff orientation on August 12th. Is yes, Monday, 12th?
Yes.
Reports invited around 8:30. We'll do a quick, it won't last long, but I think it would be great if you are available. We're introducing the mission cabinet, we're introducing the board members and a make it with base to adjournments as new employees in the district.
And where will that be?
That is going to be at the Baker High School library.
And just on another note, we have been registered for the New York State School Boards convention starting October 20th. And for the first time I've ever heard, all members of the board are attending. So I think these have been very informational in the past and shows a great deal of commitment and dedication to have everybody attending. Thank you for that. Okay, so now since Evie has been a board member for 10 minutes, she gets to give a report. Evie, I assume I'll be brief, but if you have anything you want to say, please let us go right ahead.
I'm awash with the opportunity and I'm very excited to learn what's going to go on. I hope there are more about my school career to offer.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, next is the public request to speak. Tiffany, do we have any requests?
We do now.
Okay, we're going to move on. Next is on the agenda, the consent agenda. Resolve Board of Education, approve the consent agenda pursuant to be attached. Second, Tom, Wayne? So this is pretty lengthy tonight, and I don't know if you have any particular discussion or questions? Tom?
I guess I'll go first. I just have a couple of questions on the board with claims report. And I don't know if these questions are potentially just sort of Miller educational questions. Just looking down through here, just looking at the numbers as they're presented, we've got a little over three and a half percent miss rate. In a couple of those areas, and I'm looking in particular without my glasses and see if this works. Boy, gosh, I'm looking at that. Now we're going to be here for a while. The missing proper approvals line there, 14 misses there. And I'm not picking that just because it's one of the larger numbers in the report. I'm wondering sort of what falls into the basket of missing proper approvals? And if we've missed a proper approval, how does that, how does that then go forward or does it not go forward there?
It would go, it goes to the point where it can kind of like, it would go back. That's why we have the claims auditor. Nothing's getting finalized to, you know, purchase pay until all of the steps are filed. So it gets redirected back to the supervisors and the employees.
Yes, so the missing proper approvals, it could be that maybe there was shipping on, on order that didn't get signed off on. So we would have to increase the PO and be authorized by the purchasing agent to do so prior to the order being paid for. Things like that. Sometimes we get the invoice that matches the purchase order and we know it was received, but someone forgot to sign what was received. And so our claims auditor will catch those items and make sure it goes back to the originator to get the proper approvals to pay for the order.
Okay, so essentially that number represents catches, not escapes.
Oh, yeah.
Correct. Okay.
All right, so just checking these before they go down.
All right. That answers everything else for me. Thank you.
And I will say, we had discussed this early in the year. And there was a new person doing some of these claims. And they said they were still doing some training and that our rate has come down substantially over the last few months. So it's a positive trend.
And we also have on the agenda tonight a non-instructional and other appointment for positioning typical discounts that is just not fulfilled. So that will also help with purchasing and accounts payable, et cetera.
So I have just a question on the IEP. And it's just, I noticed in the IEP, there's like 18 pages of summaries. So of all those, those have all been cases that have been heard, I guess, the last, look at the time. It's an amazing amount of work there. Just surprised. How long does it take to do all those?
So these are monthly reports. We put them up monthly, but this is kind of reflecting, I think, what happens in our office specifically at the end of the year. We do annual reviews and so all of those things tend to kind of pile up into the spring. And initial referrals come in. Some of them, we don't have a lot of control over, you know, we do response intervention. So we do try to put forward evaluations that are timely based on response intervention and progress monitoring. And we typically can see some of them coming, but we do get a lot of parent referrals the last working period. Because I think, you know, parents maybe sometimes get nervous, their kids are really struggling and we're headed into the end of the school year. And so we get a lot of referrals between May and June. And then we have like a specific timeline we have to follow to get them all done within that 60 calendar days. So what you are seeing right now is that is a typical trend, but also, yes, a grading time number in our office for that type of year.
Thank you, Karen. The other kind of question is just the budget transfer. So there were several, and this is all, as I understand it, what you're mostly doing is where you've been over expense wise. We have to by legal requirements, but not be over on any line item. And we have, we go into such detail on our line items that it's absolutely impossible to balance everyone. So we're taken out of where we've got a little original movement. But help me with the budget, close a minute. Walk us through that first from there. This could happen to you, but so what's the first, A62?
So the thousand codes are typically your, well, they are your instructional general support codes. So it's anything, this particular code is custodial stepping on 1620.
So the thousands refer to a general area?
Yes, general support.
And then the next three, this happens to both be 163. That, that yours again to certain?
Salary codes. So the 100 codes that follow that, those first four digits are your object codes. And the ones that start with one are salaries.
Okay, the ones that start with four, you've got a whole key there, I guess?
Yeah, so the ones that start with four that are 400, those are usually contractual. Forty-five are materials and supplies. Two hundred codes are equipment.
Then the next two codes?
Are the location codes. So they identify what building?
Yeah, which, which you see a lot of because, for instance, if one teacher transferred from one building to another building, that changed the salary. Thus, we have to do probably a transfer to keep those line items in line.
Correct.
Okay, and then the last four. The other thing I look for on this is it's when you're doing it, when you're doing transfers in the same general category, all you're doing, you've got the same general budget line item, you're just transferring between the detail.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay. And so there's a number of them on there, but nothing, nothing I sit outside general budget areas or anything outside.
Right, and we do try to keep them in the same function codes, which is those.
Thanks, that was a question. Okay, I don't know if there are any questions here?
Just a quick question. I'm page one, about two thirds of the way down, there's transfer company negative, bus driver selling some extra time. Is that overtime or is that extra hours?
It could be either. So we do have some overtime codes, extra time, though we do sometimes need drivers to work extra hours, maybe to fill someone who might be absent and whatnot. So if it's a regular driver that maybe fills in for another driver, it would be extra time for that driver. And it wouldn't come out necessarily as a substitute code.
And one other question, and this may be, it may be too broad a question to actually answer here. Just there may be two or three of these that have something to do with salaries. And I'm wondering if this is sort of a result of some of the staffing changes that have been made over the last few months? Or has, I think, these are new things, for example, the new special anti-tigers or something?
That one, you, that's more because that's where it started this first school year.
So the salary items appear, like the extra time, I believe there was extra time custodial as well. And I think some of that is a result of our, some of our, I'm sorry, I was going into subs. It's a result of our staffing shortages. So we may not be able to stack all of our positions and we will need additional subs for extra time for worker in place with those spots that are vacant until we can hire.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, you're done. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Eight A, resolve Board of Education, approve the resolution to dispose property of 7344 O'Brien Road, have been here and pursuant to be attached. Don, second, Wayne? Okay, brief explanation, Joe?
Yeah, so this is a property that is 19 by 75 feet. A quarter of an area of our property that we don't necessarily need. We've been asked by a homeowner if we'd be willing to sell that property because they're looking at adding to their home. Does it impact our overall access to the campus at McNamara? We're currently going back and forth. I know I've provided the board with some detailed information about the price that we've set, basically. Working with wheelers. The homeowner hasn't agreed to that yet, so even though we're putting this resolution out there, I mean, it still could ultimately not come to fruition. But I think we're comfortable where we're at with the proposal and the senior contract of the executive side. Could be a win for the homeowner. There's no, there's no significant impact on the district.
Discussion questions? Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Eight B, resolve Board of Education, approve Volvo Central School District tax levy and tax rate fiscal year 2024, 25% to be attached. Andrew? Luke? So Tiffany, you've gotten this from proper municipalities, I guess?
Yes, so the municipalities have submitted their information to the county and the county has that information on the west to calculate the rates. This tax on true value rate is actually going down because we're seeing an increase in assessed values of about 500 million for the upcoming year. And it essentially dropped the rate 9.62% from last year based on true value, so the full value of their home.
Very good news, yeah. So I know in Vice Sander, I remember we were $18 and something a thousand, I believe, is that correct? We're going down to 16.
Twenty.
Twenty eight, $16, so it's a thousand. I don't know exactly what the others were, but Vice Sander's most dramatic drop, which is a large tax base also.
And actually, just to jump in, Tiffany, I don't know if you, pop quiz time, I don't know if you know the number from last year for the vice Sander off the top of your head? I know it was eight to change, I don't know if it changed.
Well, we usually talk in terms of true value, the full valuation. The equalization rates and the assessments are, are something that goes into the calculation. So essentially the levy that we're, the voters have approved, that is the levy that goes a portion to the assessments to calculate the tax rate. So we usually talk in terms of the full value tax rate. So based on your full value assessment, the rate is $18.61 for last school year, per thousand dollar assessment, full value assessment. And then for this upcoming school year, it's $16.82 per thousand dollar full value assessment. So you have to look at your property's full valuation for that.
That's exactly what I'm saying, thank you.
And one other piece of information that we've put together today or over the course of the last couple of weeks is that last year we talked about over $40 million worth of due values added on for grants and things like that. It looks like we're around $31, $32 million this year. It is not, you know, not taken into consideration the equalization rates and all that. So what we know is there's still no, obviously, Volvo, which is a good thing.
Is it a fair statement to say that, so for example, my house was not reassessed in the last chart? Is it fair to say that people whose homes have not been reassessed are actually experiencing sort of this, this shift more so than people whose houses have been reassessed and there's such difference about that?
So in the town license, more instructive to be assertive not to reassess this past year than you're before. So that's why if you look at the tax rate, if I'm right, it's only at 80% of the true value.
So that, that's how the towns are working through the adjustments because the equalization rate?
I would give you a caution there because while the school tax is actually per thousand lower, they may have sewer tax or water tax or library tax, for instance, put up a little bit. So they may have other assessments on there that could change a little bit.
Right, and that's why I wanted to unpack this just a little so that?
So the school tax part is definitely going down. And the other thing to note is that on your statement, it won't show that, it'll still show an increase. Because they don't catch up, you know, for the time they're starting to print those statements, they have what you voted on, not an actual. I think I'm correct there, is that correct, Tiffany?
Yeah, so each of the towns, based on their equalization rate, will be impacted in time.
Okay, other questions, discussion? So this is a roll call vote.
Thomas Wall?
Yes.
Wayne Davison?
Yes.
Luke Gudowski?
Yes.
Andrew Henty?
Yes.
Victor Jenkins?
Yes.
Adam Mellon?
Yes.
Sherry Schreger?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Eight C, resolve the Board of Education, approve reserve fund transfer resolution pursuant to be attached. Don? Tom? So this does relate to a little bit of the discussion earlier, where the funds available and they're being paid to put into a, well, one of our support categories, I'm not sure. Tiffany, just give us a little executive overview.
Yes, so based on our fund balance management plan that was reviewed with the audit committee and the board, this is a plan to fund reserves with the balance at the end of the year. It'll, the plan is to continue to fund the 4% undesigned and unreserved that the board is allowed to do. And then also put it into these reserves that we've been using or planning to fund for future projects.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions? We did adopt that plan earlier. Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Wow, eight D, resolve the Board of Education authorize superintendent schools to execute on its behalf collective bargaining agreement between the Volvo Central School District and Volvo Substitute Teacher Association for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026. And be affiliated with the Board of Education fund collective bargaining agreement between the Volvo Central School District and the Volvo Substitute Teacher Association for the period from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026 pursuant to be attached. So, Don, except Luke? So this has been previously, most of the discussion, dignity, the other questions, discussion. I'm very happy to have this agreement in place. We thank people for their, their work and their contributions. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I hope the rest of the motions are a little shorter than that. Okay, wow, this, this is a good one. Eight E, so really can't, I guess, can't pursue this motion until we understand who's going to be appointed, right? Because we're appointing, what this is, a voting delegate for the, the New York State, in New York State School Boards. Because we're appointing, what this is, a voting delegate for the, the New York State, in New York State, the school boards each year puts forth resolutions, and schools are very putting forth a resolution this year. Of, and part of the business meeting, which I think is held virtually on October the tenth, I think? October the tenth, uh, will be a presentation of those motions and vote. And I know that Don and Andrew attended, well, attended virtually last year. It's a short Christmas meeting, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, completely greased wheels, there, there's not a minute wasted, it's fantastic, it's riveting, it's even entertaining, people want to tune in. So much so that, that no one else, I, I know there'll be a lot of people getting in line to do this, well, for myself in line as well, just in case anyone, you know, wants to take the year off.
So there has been a tradition in place that I expect Sam can talk to, right?
Well, I was going to volunteer to.
I'm not going to say it.
Actually, chapters ago.
So I, I break the tradition.
I was gonna say, that would be great, uh, the tradition's been that newest members get first choice. So.
Anson's Jeremy's not here.
I was gonna, I was gonna call Jeremy. I know, I was thinking we could.
I teach on Thursday night, so.
Okay, okay.
It's okay, it runs through till Friday.
How, how's about, would we appoint, well, we get to appoint with, with Sam's permission, Jeremy as the delegate and Sam as the alternate? Does that meet with? Well, now that we've got a motion, uh, okay. Eight D, resolve Board of Education appoint Jeremy Calvin as the voting delegate and Sam Schreben as the alternate for twenty twenty-four New York State Board Association's annual business meeting to be held virtually on October tenth, twenty twenty-four. So, Don, second, Wayne? I'm sure there's no discussion on this.
No discussion.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I, I will say, they, they do have some very spot booking, and we will, at a later date, see all those resolutions and get, get our input, or get our chance to put input for Jeremy and Sam.
So I actually have a, um, the topic on the work session, um, we should have the resolutions by then.
Well, August nineteenth?
Yep.
Oh, wow, that's early. Thank you, well, being as organized as you are, I guess I should not expect that. Okay, eight F, resolve Board of Education approve the Field Turf USA Incorporated contract for Phase One, twenty twenty-three, six point three, point sixty-three point nine million capital improvement project pursuant to be attached. Sam? I'm sorry, Tom? Okay, now, to be clear, we're, we're approving the whole thing here.
Correct, so there's a.
Already?
Right. So the boards, we've already done others with intent, they're ready to start the work, the final piece for the, uh, contract. So here is actually this, uh, I'll write, resolution, I'll write to me to sign off on that. And this will allow us to keep moving forward, and so you're going to see, uh, addresses Field Turf, I G, and addresses top sports contractors, the scoreboard. And then E and D specialty, which is not age, is going to be the stands and other ancillary, um, pieces for that, for that vote.
So could we pay off three of those?
Um, I would, at this point, I think the attorneys have written it, it's a three separate resolution, so.
Okay, so any discussion? Most in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eight G, resolve Board of Education approve top sports contract for Phase One, twenty twenty-three, sixty-three point nine million capital improvement project pursuant to be attached. Which is the, the field, you say?
That is the scoreboard.
Scoreboard, excuse me, I'm sorry. Andrew?
Second.
Wayne? Okay, discussion? Those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Eight H, resolve Board of Education approve E and D specialty stands, contract for Phase One, twenty twenty-three, sixty-three point nine million capital improvement project pursuant to be attached. Wayne?
Second.
Don? Since we already know that's the stands, I guess, the specialty, those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, well, that brings us to the roundtable. And it's a big live one tonight, but the first thing is the school supply. And anybody that wants to contribute, several people have, but anybody that wants to contribute to the school supply drive, there's the envelope on its way to Carrie. So Carrie, how's it going?
It's going good. Uh, we are finished with our pickup dates, so the collection dates have finished. John and I actually did a quick inventory today, looks good. It's always, it can be a little tricky this time of year to know. We do have, um, we have less requests at this point than we've had in, you know, the past few years since COVID, which I think is, makes sense. It can be hard to tell because often, like, we have seventy-three responses in our system, but often in one family with multiple children. So last year at this time, we had a hundred and seventy-three responses. And we did, uh, over three hundred and forty yearly, so, so three hundred and forty children received supplies. Our staff has gotten better over the past few years as far as like the supply list, and I think Renee curriculum, you know, Dr. Barbara worked really hard to get staff to like prioritize what's essential. Um, you know, when we first started this, those lists were, they were tough, and you couldn't even go to, um, you know, Target or Walmart necessarily and get all of the things on the list. That gets harder every year as you see school supplies are, are ready along with Halloween stuff. By the time, you know, some of the families get the wherewithal to go, everything's gone. It's, you can't find a blue, pink, yellow, green folder. So our staff has gotten really better at narrowing that down. Every little bit helps. This is really helpful because now that our collections are done, we can do that inventory, start packing the requests we have. And if we become short on equally important things like colored pencils or pencil boxes or backpacks, we do that now. So we really appreciate this. We'll keep you posted, um, as we go, we, we love the, the pickup date when the families come. We're still working on haircuts, that was a new thing we tried to add. We have one hairdresser lined up and about seventy-three haircuts, so we might have to revisit. One of the things with the community schools closer is whatever we are not able to schedule and get done on the dates that we already have, the OC students might be able to, might do something to work with the, um, positive health students and late day to an early fall haircut date.
And, and if anybody has stuff still to drop off?
Yeah.
You can do it at your, your office.
Student services, we are there every day and we will, we appreciate it. We appreciate everything, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, when are you going to start packing?
Hi. We, the eight, August sixteenth is the first date that we're gonna take a look at the responses and start packing backpacks based on the responses that we have. And what we tend to is pack by grade level. So again, back to the, the district office really supporting this initiative, um, all the grade levels have this same supply list. So we can take a look and see that we have sixteen first grade students that need supplies and we can, we'll pack sixteen first grade backpacks and get them ready to go. We just kind of go down the list and get as prepared as possible. We don't ever stop taking requests though. Toward the beginning of school, you know, that staff day, if we're still getting requests, we'll start just communicating with our staff once they come back, our social workers, our school counselors, and they'll come down and we try to keep a little bit of a supply and just do the best that we can to take all requests that come in all the way up to the end of, you know, even throughout the school year, we'll get students through. Carrie, do you take donations on yours today? Yeah, I mean, we're always obviously very grateful for our community, we have great food to bring here, but it's always willing to support whatever we need. So yes, we're always willing to, like I said, we have an ongoing, I do think that facilities too, work has been, um, very good at giving us the space. We now have a garage bay, um, and we're able to keep the supplies, you know, I think some of the people with bins brought up the bus. And that was tricky because when we first started doing this, it was stuck to the box, and we had to take everything off the bus. And we stored it in the ready basement. And when, you know, a family would need supplies or a family would move in, even they might have five kids and need supplies, I would go to the ready basement and take the cellophane off and try to get the good supplies. And now we have a space that's designated and bins that are labeled. Uh, our social workers can come over, they can get stuff at any point in time to support families with these things.
One facility two, many years ago, we did with the ready basement. That, that was a little scary. Okay, well, thank you for that, Carrie, that's great, and, uh, that essentially start, end of our business meeting. So resolve Board of Education here for the executive session, discussing whether a particular person mattered places, specific placement in our program that would otherwise suppose confidential, personally identifiable student information. Don, Tom? And assuming no discussion, we'll vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please adjourn, we'll be in executive five minutes, thank you.